All right, welcome everyone to the February 1st meeting of the Barrington Plant Board. My name is James Genison, Chair, and tonight we have Donna Masucci, Andrew Melnickis, Ron Allard, myself, James Jess, Buddy Hackett. Joining us remotely is Jeff Brand and Steve Diamond. We also have remotely Planning Consultant Carol Ogilvy, Code Enforcement Officer John Huckins, and Town Administrator Conor McGyver. On the agenda is minutes from January 18th. Questions, comments, corrections?
Comment. Line. That's what I said. Basically, what I'm trying to say is that I saw it going down to 120 feet. Going deeper in existing areas did represent some additional risk. So it says no significant risk. Some additional risk was.
What number you on? Four sixty-five. Sixty-five, I'm looking at fifty-five.
Bringing five acres down to existing level would immediately represent reasonable risk. But going deeper beyond the groundwater level, I thought, did represent some additional risk. That's what I was trying to say.
No significant, but some additional.
Yeah. Some additional risk.
Anyone else? Good. A motion to approve minutes without correction.
I make a motion to approve the minutes with the corrections, the lines four sixty-five, four sixty-six.
Second.
But Jeff Brand, second by Ron Allard. Donna Masucci? Andy M?
Yeah, bye.
Ron Allard?
I'm dying.
Buddy Hackett?
Die.
James Genison, aye. Steve Diamond?
Diamond, die.
Jeff Brand?
Brand, aye.
Minutes are approved as corrected. Number two. Mr. Canyon, owner of the property at 317 Frank Harris Highway, would like to have a discussion with the board about adding a sixty by one square foot building to his business. Your name and a brief synopsis of what you.
Jamie. Just so you know, every time you guys start shuffling papers in front of those microphones, we can't hear you.
I apologize, I'll keep my shuffling till I'm. All right, John, how you doing?
Yeah, good, thank you, how are you? Thanks for having me this evening. Yeah, so we own the property at 317 Route 9 here in Barrington, next to the Gun Club. And we have about an acre, just under an acre and a quarter. We'd like to construct a building to run our roofing business out of that building. And just had a few questions for the board, just so I understand the parameters of what I can build it, if I cannot. We proposed a sixty by one twenty, that's flexible depending on what my costs come in. I certainly, harder than that. So a few of my questions are, what does it mean exactly to be in the village district? Help describe.
Yeah, the zoning is broken up into few categories, village district, just a name chosen to describe said district as residential, commercial. So the village, and they come with certain parameters, trying to keep a certain character for that area.
Right, okay.
And.
This table shows the different areas and what requirements are for the zone.
I see, okay.
John's application, he would be under a mixed use. If you go to the village district, you go to mixed use portion, which is eight point three point four one cc's. You can do a mixed use, the legal existing, you should use. So because he already has a residence there, he's able to have his business without having to have that business on the second floor, like a typical mixed use has to be regulations become, that's already legally existing. Thank you.
I would tell you my concern is maximum lot coverage is forty percent. That's structures impervious to impervious surface, so. You, I think you're gonna get, at least close to that or even above.
Well, I think you also gotta consider the driveway, because there's gonna have to be a driveway over to that building.
Yeah, that's what I mean, impervious surface, including the driveway, structures, driveways, all that includes it, all that counts, so. You're gonna be better run the number. Run the numbers, make sure I don't go over forty percent. And that includes the structure and drive, paved surface. Any and. And surface. Including driveway.
Even if it's not paved?
Even if it's not. So.
Because gravel is considered impervious.
It is.
Yeah, because the water doesn't go through, there's not much difference between pavement and gravel.
And pack.
Because, because water runs off even on a gravel driveway.
Right.
Because it doesn't soak in.
Yeah. Thank you. Confirm the setbacks in the zone. Forty from the front lot? Forty from the front, thirty, thirty. The sides thirty. Side thirty back? Maximum height of the building is thirty-five.
And if there's any flatlands on your lot, to overlook on the record, until March, you've got to still keep a fifty foot buffer. If the petition warrant article passed, that would. Doesn't pass, then that buffer requirement would go away, but as of right today, it's applied because it's noticed.
Okay, all right, I don't believe that applies on my lot, there's, there's nothing wet there, but.
But if there's any wetland on surrounding lots that are up close to yours, I don't know if there is or not. I just thought I'd point out to you. Because if there is any wetland, you gotta have that fifty foot. But there's no dredge, no fill, it's not a building. Alex said.
Okay, even if they're not on my lot.
The GIS map did say that there's somewhat, somewhat close by, not on your lot, but nearby.
I'm sorry, was that a question or a statement? I know, he was letting you know that the GIS maps online.
Yeah.
Give you some indication of proximity, but they're not a hundred percent accurate. And this is, this is new, a new regulation that's been, previously that lot would be exempt from wetland buffers, but there's been a citizen petition, so. It goes into effect until we vote in March, and then we'll know if it stays as, as it is, or if it goes back to the old, where you wouldn't be. So there is a window that you may want to wait if you find wetlands and see how the vote goes. And you can't build in a certain spot, or you could, so something to consider, you know, because it's in limbo.
Okay, yeah, I don't believe there's anything wet. Close to where I'm gonna build, but it's good to know.
And Jamie, Jeff has his hand up.
Oh, Jeff.
Yeah, I got a few questions. First off, and this is on a state road, so there must be a New Hampshire DOT driveway permit. Do you know what that permit currently says, is it for a residence, and will you need to reapply?
I know the answer to that one, he would need to apply for the, we've run into this before. Any expansion of use above what exists today requires something from them. A lot of times they don't require any upgrade, but we still have to get something from them before we can issue the building.
Okay, so that's something to put on the list. Along those same lines, although, I mean, you're, you're talking, how many trucks, how many vehicles are you talking about?
Three to four vehicles, maybe a few trailers.
All right, so I, even though there should be a nutter, somewhere you would need to address the traffic impact, you probably have to do that for the DOT change anyway, but that would be, need to be part of your application.
Just asking how many vehicles, go ahead. I see, thank you.
And then showing a location on the plan where they'll be parked.
Okay.
Because it's like a contractor's storage yard, if you've got any commercial equipment there.
Yes, and that, that was gonna be another question that I had, so you've got the trucks, they're parked in there, I assume you have employees that would be coming, you know, to work and then driving the vehicles out, so they're gonna come in vehicles, where you, you know, what's the parking situation gonna be for the employee parking?
Is there a requirement, number of spaces, in relation to the size of the building?
That's why I'm asking, there are, there are requirements in the regulations.
Based on the use in the site, so a combination of the two.
Okay.
So I can work with your, you or whoever's gonna represent you with the regulations on that.
I mean, is this considered a home business?
No.
Or?
This is a straight up mixed use thing, because this business is outside the realm of a home business, because of the size of the building you want.
Okay.
So that's why I showed the mixed use, is allowed to use, mixed use by our regulation says it has to be above the building on the second story, to have the mixed use.
Yeah.
But that section I read here stated that if there's an existing residential use there, it can be part of a mixed use, so he's coming in as a full-fledged business contractor. Residential on the same lot.
Now, if he finds his lot coverage is too high and he gets below the threshold of, is it wise or another consideration to go home business as opposed to mixed use?
The home business, he's not allowed to build in that big.
Would be limited to.
So his building, he could stay with the mixed use and have a building still that would be bigger than would be allowed as a.
Twenty-five hundred square feet, right?
In that zone, what was the, was a proposed change? I don't have it with me, the, you guys did propose one in zoning, that was, that it's not in my zoning.
Yeah, twenty-five hundred, I think is, is.
I can't remember the number, but I know there was a proposed.
But it also, if you go and ship to a home business, that's also gonna limit the number of employees to just two. And I don't know if that's conducive with his business.
Yeah.
John come in and talk to me, I felt that he should just come under mixed use business with the residents there because of, like you described, give it more flexibility.
Right.
Uh, okay, well, so we addressed parking. Will there be storage, many materials outside to build them?
I can't say there wouldn't be any, be minimal, though, I mean, that's the reason for the building, so most everything would be inside.
All right, well, if you are gonna have a laydown area outside the building, that would need to be reflected in the plans.
So when you come back, I guess what he's trying to say is we'll, we'll be looking for a site plan.
Okay.
Some version of a site plan that would show location of the building, location of parking spaces for employees, proposed spots for where your truck's gonna be parked, if not inside, dumpster location, if you're gonna have a dumpster on site. If you're gonna go a certain height, yeah, you know, we're gonna ask you the question that if it's not sprinkled, you can't stack anything over a certain height in the building, so if, you know, if you're gonna try and high stack stuff, like we come in with the snowmobile guys, you know, they can't stack it, you know, so high, or else you're gonna have the building be sprinkled.
Well, I would suggest that he needs to.
Like this building, it's not a storage building, if it was a storage building, you got the high pile of storage, which is the twelve feet, that doesn't apply for buildings that aren't designed as storage.
It wouldn't be.
Okay, but he's gonna have vehicles in there that are gonna be full of fuel, that's, if he's storing roofing materials, those are, are not highly flammable, but if they were to ignite, that would cause a problem. So I, I would think you'd still need to consult with the fire chief while he's developing the plans to figure out if there's any peculiarities in the fire code that would be applicable to his situation.
You know, some, yeah, and he'll, he might ask some questions about how they can get around the building, would that size trigger any requirements to get around the building to, for fire access?
If it doesn't trigger it, if you could give him the access, he's gonna ask, you know, try to get it, which is reasonable, depending on, instead of your parking, you know, to get a fire truck, you want your building safe too.
Right.
So it's in your interest to try to work with them to make it safe, even if it's, some of the stuff you do is above the minimum code requirement, just like a builder, most builders don't, minimum codes here, most builders build up here, they don't try to build the minimum. It's the same concept.
Okay.
Another issue in the, is you're gonna have to have a driveway that goes, I, I assume you're gonna take the, the cut that's currently there for the U-shaped driveway and come off of that over to the building, is that correct?
That's, that's correct.
Then the driveway is gonna have to meet the standards, which for non-residential use is a twenty-foot wide driveway?
Right.
Okay. What, in a, what fuels or any cleaning solutions or any materials, you know, liquids, might be in this building?
Just whatever's in the vehicles.
Okay.
Sort of office space, you know, so they can run the business, and then trucks and trailers and some material.
All right. You're planning on running underground utilities to that building?
Depends on where on the lot it goes, if it sits on the, I guess on the, against the back lot, probably, if it's close to the road, probably not.
Where's the septic? Do you know where the septic is on that?
Currently for the residential house?
Yes.
Uh, it's behind it toward the, toward the gun shop, so directly behind the house.
Have any issues, but just trying to fake connectivity to that, but you can have facilities out there.
Okay.
But you, you said that you, I thought I saw somewhere in your proposal that you were going to actually install a small septic for that building?
That would be ideal. It's too far away from the residential system to try to plug into it.
Okay, but it'll be a single, single bath, so that'd be a fairly small system.
Right.
A moment ago, you were saying, you were, you were saying whether or not the utilities be buried, of course, it's gonna have electricity, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna be an office area and a bathroom, so he's gonna have to have electricity.
Right, it's in the shop area, but if it, if it backs up to the road some, then I'd be within, let's say a hundred feet of the pole. It's across the field, be, you know, against the, the back lot. Then I'd rather go underground than have it go parking lot.
Great.
Is, is there any lighting for that driveway or on the building exterior?
Um, only what would be required.
Well, what's required depends on whether you're gonna light it or not.
Is a table.
If you look in section three point eight of the, of the site plan review regulations, it talks about what's required to be in your plans. So if you're gonna illuminate the outside of the building, if you'd be required to, to show a profile, an elevation of the building that shows what lighting you're gonna have? And one last.
Yeah, go ahead.
One last note that I had was, you know, we talked about the impervious surface, your circles, yeah, you are gonna have to show, because where is the water from the building in the drive going to go? I, I don't know, it looks like your lot is fairly flat. But that's, that's something that you, you're gonna have to, where is that water going that's coming off those surfaces?
Okay.
Some early snow load, where it sheds and how much load there might be, you might wanna make it a little more pitched than pre-level.
Lot does look flat, but it's not, it definitely slopes away from the road toward the, toward the back, and continues to go through the forest at that grade. Is there any, is there any restriction to having the non-buildable setback area be parking area? Like that thirty-foot buffer from the, you know, the property line, a thirty feet in, can that be parking area? Seeing, can I clear right to my property line and put crushed gravel there?
That would factor into your impervious soils.
Right, right, and just no structure within that area.
There was.
Well, clearing, I was just reading about for the next, the next applicant, actually, there are, under some circumstances, requirements for shade trees, depending on how much area is going to be a parking lot. And clearing all, all the, all the way along the road would be not particularly desirable as far as buffering goes, visually.
No, I'd, I'd like to leave a visual between the road and the lot, it's, it's the other, the back end of the lot. It's quite heavily wooded, that's the area that I would clear to my property line and probably grade out with gravel. I think ideally, I think it would, I would think it would fit better. Be all the lot plan with a proposed building on it? No. But I will, you know. Forty percent of, your lot's roughly fifty thousand square feet, roughly. Forty percent. There's thousand, you're building, say five hundred, you got an existing house that's some, something, you got driveways that are something. So, you know.
I'll do the math.
There's a fifty-foot green belt. Too much gravel coming to places, you're gonna be tough.
There's a fifty-foot green belt buffer. And the village district, if you go four point two point two, quantity eight, and I think it's a fifty-foot green belt buffer required on twenty-five and nine. Says which no development, storage, parking, or paving shall be permitted, except if necessary to provide access or signage. Says the green belt buffer must be left at its natural state.
Yeah. Yeah, that's desirable, I, I prefer to leave that.
Fifty foot, you asked the question how far?
Yes.
Fifty feet.
Okay, all right, thanks.
But your question was for thirty feet on the sides of the back, correct?
Yes, right. Oh, yeah. Both, both arrived, there's two separate questions there, but.
Yeah, so there's no setback requirements for, let's say, driveway on the sides.
Okay.
The building setbacks.
Yeah.
A green belt buffer on the front edge, you gotta have at least fifty feet of that vegetated buffer before even your parking lot starts.
Okay.
It says specifically, no development, storage, parking, or paving shall be permitted. Except for access or signage in the green belt buffer.
Okay.
Right, so that's the green belt buffer. To the other question about in the normal setbacks, not the green belt buffer, but the other setbacks, to what John was just saying, so you're not allowed to erect any structure within the buffer, within the setback areas, but if you go to the definition of structure, it specifically exempts driveways, sidewalks, and parking lots from the definition of structure, it's not considered a structure.
Setback purposes, right.
Setback purposes, not for the, for the green belt area.
Okay, yeah, I prefer to leave green belt area is built behind it, I mean, I'd harp on it, your house is over here, your driveway's over here.
Yeah.
Building's here, running a driveway all over and taking, taking, you know, that thirty feet over there, you're starting a good, a lot of impervious surface, so.
Right.
You know, once again, pay attention to that. I'll do the math on it, see the forty percent. Special permit required for, for solar panels, if they were either on the building or on a freestanding?
Just a building permit.
Just a building, okay.
Yeah, if you go to the, the zoning ordinance, you'll see we added a whole section on solar, and it'll give you what the rules are on that.
Yeah, for a commercial solar field, the stuff that you plan to approve about a solar panel, you know, requirements for that solar exemption thing, that, but that. There's a maximum amount you can put on your surface for the solar thing.
Oh, right, okay.
So if you. In the regulations, where you don't need.
Right, I think we included enough height, so if you wanna go tracking. Right, right.
What's simplest is roof mount, that's, that's really quite straightforward, so you might wanna think about how you site the building and what pitch you're looking for. Personally, my, my solar panels, they're not pitched enough, I have to scrape the snow off, if I, if there's just a little bit more pitch.
Yeah.
Be a lot easier.
Well, I'd like to tuck the building in behind the green belt buffer, to make it more visually appealing, and try to almost hide the building, in a sense, in that deal, but it puts it on the north side of the lot, behind the trees. If I were to do that, I was considering a solar panel freestanding, that would be on the other side of the feet, it would face south, so it wouldn't be on the building at all.
It was eye count as towards the impervious area.
Don't think so?
Those trackers, they go flat.
No, like on a, like on a, like a pole, you know, big square ones, yeah, they track, right, so it's, it's really just on a footing.
One on top of Duty Hill Road, which, take a look at that.
Right. Like, yeah, like staples, you know, two oh two on exit thirteen, right, they've got like five of them in there, in the front field.
Duty Hill Road is.
Okay, yeah, yep. So the, the size of the building, I, I just picked a number, it's sixty by one twenty, it's, it, it might be larger than I need or wanna pay for. But I do, I would like, this is where this year is, this is second year in business, and I'm optimistic I'll be expanding. If I do have extra space in my building, is it permissible that I might rent some of that space out? To like, some, you know, another builder who's got a truck in the garage bay, or, you know.
It's been done in the past, is you would give a list of uses that would possibly go into. If the board approved those uses, you come in and see me, if it's one of the approved uses, then they're allowed to go in.
Okay.
If it's not one of those approved uses, then you would come back in the planning board and say, I would like to add this use, but if it's gonna be for contractors, stuff being in there.
Yeah.
Same idea as yours. Basically what you're asking for now, but if you're thinking of something else above that, it'd be worth making that list now for them to review.
Okay, it was just a hypothetical, really, I'd like to really use the whole building, but.
And the reason for it is, is all of a sudden you put in a high-use business that generates more traffic.
Right.
Needs different hours of operation and they open later.
Yeah.
Gonna have a lot more questions regarding that, require different types of lighting, based on uses, then you need a lighting plan for the whole property, and make sure you have proper illumination, and stuff like that.
Right.
So it could trigger more things, depending on the uses are.
I don't wanna make it complicated.
And different uses has different parking requirements for the size of the building.
Right, right, you can't come back, though, if you change your mind, if something happens down the road, you wanna change your mind, you can come back. Yeah, okay.
Uses are compatible with what you're doing now, you could give a list of those uses.
It's kinda what I was thinking, where I'm in the roofing business, and if I were to, you know, rent the bay out to say like a, you know, a gutter contractor. You know, we're like-minded and work in the same hours and.
You'll pack their boat there or something.
Sorry?
Right, you know, if somebody wants to pack their boat there for the winter.
Right, right, just a hypothetical, I've got this building, and somebody asks, I, I wanna know upfront, if, you know, if I have the option. And I believe there's a, there's a building size restriction, if I were gonna build on a slab.
Yeah, yeah, can't exceed six hundred square feet without frost protection.
Okay.
You can still go on a slab bigger than that, as long as that's frost protected, they have those things called Alaskan slabs, to where they're basically made the same way, but they put styrofoam around the whole thing, and then.
And down, down.
Down underneath it, so they're protected from frost, there's, there's a whole design standard of how go above doing that.
Okay.
For that, as part of your building, that would be something, best at timing your building permit.
Okay.
As far as the planning board, it's the location, what the building looks like, and the use.
Okay. I'm, I'm currently considering insulated concrete forms, and just down four feet.
Just so you know, i- if you go look at the, you were talking about installing the, the solar collection system, that if you go to a ground mount system, you're limited in height, if it doesn't track. If it doesn't track, it's fifteen. If it does track, it's twenty. You're also limited, uh, you know, well, if you mount it up on a roof, it, uh, it's exempt from the building height limitations, so.
Okay.
That you might wanna consider. But if you go to section tw- article twenty-one in the zoning ordinance, it'll, uh, it'll, it'll give you all those, uh, those requirements.
Thank you.
Tracking system gives you fifty, sixty percent increase on total solar.
Wow.
For the size of your panels, because there's something about reflection on the ground coming up there. Whole mount panels are made so that you can get energy from underneath too, or one rip on top.
Wow.
It's a different panel.
Right.
That's what the locals are telling me.
Well, one thing you need to consider though, in the placement, the location, and is, uh, has to do with, uh, glare coming off of it. Especially where you're on a state road there with a lot of traffic. You do not wanna be blinding, uh, drivers with reflections off the panels at any point in time.
Okay.
You said that was gonna go out back, right?
Um, no, actually, if, if, i- if I hide the building, uh, behind the green buffer, the panel would be actually facing route nine. Which is, that, that would be facing south. I don't know if the angle of the panel cut down on glare for any drivers, or maybe it's not a, can spot them. And that's really what I'm doing this evening, is just exploring options. Um, last question I have, um, is, uh, signage. We mentioned that briefly, but is there, um, the restrictions there as far as the size of the sign and how far back off the road?
Yes.
Yes, it's covering the regulations.
It's in article, uh, twenty of the zoning ordinance for signs. It, it, uh, how they lit, what maximum area is, where they can be located. It can't be in the, uh, public right of way, for instance. So, you know, there's a number of requirements there. We don't allow.
District, got a maximum of forty-eight square feet, maximum height of ten, and it's gotta be ten feet back from the edge of the property line, or freestanding sign.
Forty-eight square, ten feet of height and ten feet back.
Yeah, and it also, we don't allow like any flashing signs, you know. There's lighting requirements there.
Okay, I'll look into that in article twenty, thank you. That's all I have. This is any other questions?
You said you're putting this plan together?
Yeah.
Can you, you, a stamp survey, survey that can stamp it?
Uh, I'm working on that. There's a, there's a survey that was done, uh, by Mr. Dave Benson. Um, survey.
I'm working with him, but you're gonna represent it?
Yeah, that's what I'm all.
Okay.
Yep.
Cause there's that requirement for a stamp survey plan, I just wanted to make sure you knew that.
Okay, right. Yes, I did know that, thank you. Alright, that's all I have. Thank you. Thank you. Number three, request for applicant Russell, two A tactical, two sixty-three dash R C dash twenty-one dash S I.
Evening. Time no see.
Making a regular.
You ready if you want?
Yep.
Scott from the, yeah, fan consultants and, I mean, unified builders. Here, just to really get an update, uh, to the board. You got the review from CMA last Tuesday. We've gone through it. You've got, uh, most of it's minor in nature. Different things, plans. Uh, we do have questions on lighting and landscaping. Which has kinda been a focus on this site for a while. Lighting, uh, the review engineer said it should have been designed as a low-activity, uh, site. We designed it as a high-activity site due to the nature of the business. And I just like to talk to the board about that, whether we have to back change that lighting, or if we can stick with both. The majority of the site are in the twos for, for candle. Um, the high is three six, which is the highest in the high. And that's just around the building and the couple that are in the.
So you know Jake Jody from CMA is online, so you can.
I, I thought we previously discussed this and we were, with a couple of areas on the building there, we were satisfied with the way it was designed and classified.
Yep, I think we, uh, we're all on board. I think it was, it was appropriate. I think CMA, Jeff, CMA just commented that it was on the, you know, right chart for use, but.
Yeah, I know, I, I saw it, I, it's, it's, the board had a different interpretation of what type of facility it was and what the numbers were, so.
I think we're all good on that one.
Okay. And then with the land.
Lighting, lighting plan needed correction, you know, the pictures weren't right.
Right, we were, we were gonna add the two on the overhead door and then the, uh, canopy lights to the, to the, um, legend. Then moving on to the landscaping, um, we're going to, um, one of the interpretations of the, uh, better landscaping is a shade tree every twenty feet around the parking lot. With that, we'd have to put twenty trees around the parking lot. I don't know if that was the intent, or if I'm misinterpreting the way the regulation is. Right now, on our landscape plan, I think we shook five or six and then a bunch of, or, characters of escaping. His review, who he says to follow the regs, and it says, parking lots, perimeter trees every twenty feet are grouped, but the number of twenty trees. So we would have to increase that trees by double of what we're proposing.
I believe I, I said that, uh, at the time, that your landscape plan is lovely, and it is. Uh, I was not aware of this, um, what CMA cited in the site plan review, until I'm looking at it right now. So yes, it looks like there is a requirement for shade trees for climate control.
Every twenty?
Yeah, that's under.
I think it's four point nine point seven five for the perimeter shade.
Four point nine seven parentheses one is where you might wanna start.
Specifically, it's, it's five where it's talked perimeter. And then I have a question again on internal trees, but, or internal parking.
The question is, it does say, you know, one tree per twenty feet of parking lot perimeter, however, it says that portions where streaming is required. Shade trees should be quite on perimeter ratio of one tree every fifty feet. So, i- is that applicable to the front of the parking lot that is in the vegetative buffer?
On your plan, didn't you have a whole bunch of other plantings all on?
Yes.
Along the fr- front, which is a different part of the regulation, we, we have trees and, and shrubs, and then there's a section that's about perimeter trees around the parking lot. And then there's a section.
But I thought to the, to the rear and to the north of that parking lot, you were, the existing vegetation was remaining.
That is.
So the only plantings would be where? Along the, the southern side of the parking lot?
That, that's the building, the southern side of the parking lot, so the, but the east side would be, I don't know where the detention pond is. And then the, the north side would be through the, or towards Taylor School.
That ground drops way off after that anyway, so those trees you wouldn't even see from the road, or if you're able to go to the parking lot, so it shouldn't serve any purpose to the parking lot because of how the ground drops off.
Right.
That must drop. Probably close to ten feet it dropped off.
Drops down.
You got, had a slope, you had your parking lot.
It's like twelve feet. Yeah. So we would like, if we could, keep the one that we submitted with just a few trees around, some bushes and stuff. And then we got guardrail as well on, on the e- on the east side of the park, for that slope.
Well, I, I mean, uh, in CMA's defense, you know, they're, they're following our requirement, so.
Right.
So, it's right to point it out, but if you present a plan and the board considers that it meets the intent of the regulations, you can ask for a waiver of that particular article in the regulations, and we can consider that.
That would be my recommendation.
We do have a request for a favor we'd like to present tonight to, uh, in association with landscaping, not, not to the perimeter trees, but we could add it to the list. The waiver we were, were gonna request was the internal shade trees, which is another one that they pointed out in section four point nine point four. It says one tree fifteen spaces. We have eleven internal spaces, so if you follow the regulations, it's one tree. And our islands aren't actually raised islands, they're painted islands for ease of maintenance and drainage and other things. So there would be really nowhere internally to put a tree. We'd like to ask for a waiver for that.
Part of the intent of those raised curbs and so forth is to direct, uh, pedestrian, um, routes within your parking area. Is it? I don't have that picture in front of me. Is it clear where people are gonna be walking?
Well, we, yeah, we've never presented curbing islands in the parking lot from the beginning. Uh, it's always been painted islands for the reason of drainage.
It's a pretty small parking.
Yeah. There is sidewalk on, on the whole front of building, and then two-thirds of the, the front side of the building where people talk to, to get into the building. It is an open parking lot, no get out of your car and you're gonna walk to the sidewalk, it's, it's not.
Shouldn't be too confused with that.
It's not like you're in a shopping mall, you got all the stuff, trying to make traffic flow so that it doesn't create one small parking.
Yep.
Makes sense.
So then the two waivers would be the seven point nine point seven for the C four and then C five, would it be the trees for the internal and?
Yes. Turn the waiver.
Yep.
Someone will just add four to that.
I, I would, uh, yeah, I, we just, we gotta look at the plans and, uh, I, personally, I'm satisfied that the landscape plan meets the spirit and intent of the, uh, the regulations.
Disagreement on the board for discussion.
Jeff, on this one, I kinda surprised we have one tree per twenty feet.
Keep the town green as possible, right?
Especially where you got a green belt buffer. So if you go to that exemption thing, that talks about the green belt buffer, so any place, um, nine, one twenty-five, four, all of them have green belt buffers, so every one of them are gonna have a fifty-foot buffer, even if they don't put trees in.
It says we're, you know.
Well, it says if you have, stop there, you can go fifty.
Yeah, that's for, and you could say you can group them.
I mean, then there's the whole school of thought that you're driving down the highway, doing sixty-five, and all the trees hide the building, slamming your brakes, and you don't see it. Thought, you know.
Well, there was a change made a few years back, cause that green belt buffer, to make sure that it was not as, not a visual buffer, because at one time it was being interpreted as a visual see-through, supposed to hide the business, and planning would make some changes to get that. We're on the board then, I think, Jeff, would you make that change?
Yeah, I think I was, and I'll also point out to Mr. Jameson, if he's doing sixty-five by two-way tactical, that that's, uh, he's signed for a big ticket for excessive speed, cause the speed limit's fifty.
I'm not gonna lie, I keep up with traffic, Jeff.
The officer is not gonna accept that as an excuse.
I've used it three times so far and it always works. I'm just keeping up with traffic. I always cry.
That works in New York and Boston, not in Berington.
Have a skirt, cause if I cry, that doesn't do anything.
So the other.
Moving on, yeah.
Yeah.
You guys wanna vote on these?
Jeff, you should make a motion, I think, there.
Spirit intent motion, I think that's a good way to.
Yeah, uh, so, we, we, have they submitted the waiver?
Yep, I've got it for, for four and five.
Alright, well, I don't have it in front of me, so it would be easier if somebody else made the spirit intent from the regulations, and I'll second it.
I'll make a motion.
Oh, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to grant a waiver for article four, design and construction standards, sections four point nine point seven, parents four and parents five, for internal shade trees and and perimeter shade trees, uh, as.
Should be the second one, site-specific conditions.
Specific circumstances related to subdivision or conditions of the land in such subdivision indicate that the waiver will probably carry out the spirit intent of the regulations.
I second.
Motion by James Jensen, seconded by Jeff Brand, uh, Andy M.
Yeah, my.
Donna Suchi. Ron Allard.
All right.
Buddy Hackett.
Hackett, I.
Steve Diamond.
Diamond, I.
Jeff Brand.
Brand, I.
James Jensen, I, all in favor. Motion carries.
Alright.
Boy, I, I'm looking at the screen here. I wanna know why it's still light in Portsmouth. It's dark as hell in Berington.
Magic film.
Lit up Portsmouth Harbor than my bedroom behind me, so. All of a sudden.
I appreciate it, but you're that good.
Alright, um, next we have, uh, outdoor lighting, we already covered that one, right?
You addressed it to, you felt it met the regulations, there was no waiver on it, but you felt that it met the regulations.
That's a waiver after we proved it, didn't we?
Yeah, you did.
Yeah, proved it for it.
Okay. Alright, I'll take over now.
So really, what we got left is addressing the, the comments from CMA, which are mostly minor comments throughout the plan set, and then our DOT permit, which is outstanding and we'll get that. Uh, they do have all of data, they got this trip, traffic reports and everything right now, so we'll wait for that.
So of all the documents that CMA, uh, cited as they didn't have, have they been submitted?
Yes, we submitted them. The Jody, I'd probably, I think it was today or yesterday, it was just recently, but they do have them.
Yeah, we have, no, I have extensively reviewed them, but we do have them.
A couple of things I mentioned was having a disabled parking sign and, uh, snow storage on the plan.
Yeah, that will all be on the plans. Everything, uh, the only ones we had questions were the lighting and the landscaping, and everything else is, is something easily be addressed.
Uh, I, I, I guess I've got a question, it's actually for Jody, but it had to do with, there were a lot of comments about the drainage system, elevations. But it seemed like it was more of an issue of level of detail in the plan to getting it right than there was any major issues with the drainage. Is that correct?
That is correct, yeah, they were just, there are a lot of them, but they're minor plan comments. The drainage design is great.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? We can continue this, if you have a date in mind.
Unless we can get a conditional approval based on utilization.
That was the intent, do I have that here?
I didn't put it together because they had so many things outstanding, I wasn't thinking that you guys were going to be doing it tonight.
What's the board's?
The only thing you would have be the basic plant stuff that would be added to the plan. Two waivers granted tonight, there was two waivers granted.
I think there's a total of five waivers with the.
Do you mind?
Legend waiver.
Yeah. Pages nine or 12 or something like that.
Would you mind coming back while we get that written and proper?
Okay.
I just hate to wing it.
Okay.
If you're going to come back.
And I can look at it because usually like engineer stand, that stuff, you know, typical.
Right.
Is that, if the board agree, was, I'll give, I'll put it out there for everybody.
I don't think on this one we ought to wing it, I think we ought to, we need a good draft notice of decision, have all the appropriate material in there. There were, and you know, obviously, even though there's a lot of minor comments, there's a lot of them and you know, we should get a good set of plans, you know, before, that are all corrected before we go ahead and finally approve.
Something could be probably in two weeks, I don't think you guys have much scheduled two weeks from now. Unless you're going to plan on working on your subdivision and site review regulations right off. I know there was discussion of doing that after your zoning, but it hasn't been completely addressed, so I guess I'm asking. Ready to start working on them or just do your applications on the first week or have them create the second, the third week?
I'm okay with them coming in the next meeting if we get our ducks in a row. I, with respect to subdivision regulations, I've been working on them and I'm pretty close to finishing up. So then go to the board, the board's going to take a couple of weeks to look at them before we sit down and discuss them anyway. So, you know, everybody's going to have.
I just didn't want to get into a schedule that you guys had in mind, so that's why I was asking.
And this one should be pretty quick as far as just reading it off, minor questions.
That'd be the 15th.
Yep, a motion to continue to February 15th. I'll make the motion to continue to. Second by. I need the names to read off, I can't, there we go, I got it. Motion by James Jensen, seconded by Buddy Hackett, Donna M. Andy M.
Andy M, I.
Buddy Hackett.
Hackett, I.
Ron Allard.
All right.
Steve Diamond.
Diamond eye.
Jeff Brand.
Brand eye.
James Jensen, I, continue to February 15th. Thanks. Next up. Chain card, Global Homes, 216-1-GR-22, request by applicant for a design review for a proposal for a three lot subdivision on Parkham Road. Same.
Back, welcome. I do have stuff, if I can. Can you actually just get up?
Reintroduce yourself. Get it virtually.
All of them, just the proposed conditions is fine. Scott Frankos, from New York, consultants here for a design review. This was a preliminary plan that was put in front of the zoning board, got a special exception for the driveway configuration. We did meet with John, I'm really in the process about property. It's 10.66 acres on Route 126, just before Boulder Drive as we headed towards Stratford. 855 feet or 885 feet of frontage on Route 126. So there's plenty of space to have curb cuts, DOT has been out there, driven out there, you've noticed there's been logging out there. He had to give them their access to property, accessing it, close to where this driveway is proposed, actually driveway is proposed a little bit closer to the intersection of 202 from where it is right now, where they're pulling the logs out. We do have the 400 feet of site distance both ways and we will be submitting the DOT permit soon. What we're proposing is three lots, starting from, if you're looking at the plan on the right, that would be Lot 1, that's a five acre lot with 359 feet of frontage. Lot 101 is this next lot, the middle lot, that's 2.59 acres with 201 feet of frontage. And then the last lot, 1.02 is 3.07 feet or acres with 336 feet of frontage. We're proposing 16 foot wide common driveway with two foot shoulders and a turnaround on Lot 1.01, which is, is real, it's aligned with driveway, but this, the side on the Route 126 side is half of a hammerhead design that Barrington has in the regulations. We're proposing also a 30 foot right of way across the first two lots, which will be, everybody will have rights to that, there'll be a road association. Opposing the drainage to come along roadside sway, or driveway swales down to a little detention area down there, 126. Currently, we're showing the pipe going out, there's a catch basin up on 126 in this area where the water will be drained into. Some of this runoff from the houses and stuff will make its way down here, there's a cove that goes across under 126 to a swale that eventually gets to Isinglass. The driveway location is about 150 feet from the river, it's the furthest we could go without impacting the 50 foot buffer to this wetland. So we pushed it as far as we could to Route 202. We did receive comments from staff review and department review, will incorporate those in the plans. And we did receive an email from the Conservation Commission saying they support the design. The reason for the design is each lot, as I said, could access 126, but as, if you drive by there, you'll see there's very steep slope and it would be a switchback and it would be a lot of construction, it'd be closer to the river. The river actually comes right up to the road, or very close to the road. This area, so if the driveway is coming out here, here, it would be very close, bringing it down here, it gets it way away from it. Barrington regulations allows for up to three lots on a common driveway and open any questions?
You, you were talking about how the swale was going to drain and you said back up to that one that's in front of the middle lot. But I was going to question anyway, what the structure is underneath the driveway, that appears to be a drain also? Or is that a drain that goes into the soil?
That is just if any water is coming along the roadside swale, it's really flat in that area. So there is going to be some water that drains to this existing cover that comes across. And the drainage isn't fully, completely designed yet, this is preliminary and we could potentially reorient it and discharge it this way. So it takes a little bit longer to get down to the river as well.
Well, I guess, I, two questions, one, it looks like you've got a drain line underneath that driveway, is that correct?
The proposed driveway?
Yeah.
We have one right up by the road, right, kind of where we'll come off at a negative slope.
Looks like there's another one like 50 feet up the driveway.
There is.
And.
There is another one.
What direction? Go ahead.
There's another one proposed right here, which we have a swale on either side, so it'll come down, collect it. This swale will dump into this little detention area, this will collect this side and bring it over there so we can control it instead, because there's no way to control it on this side because of the 50 foot buffer to that wetland.
So what about the, that to be a treatment swale, because you're, if you go up to that other that going directly into the Isinglass, I mean, so you got to make sure that the water's properly treated before it gets there.
Right. Yeah, and one of the aspects of this, we will have to have a shoreline permit, so that may get scrutinized by that, but we will have to treat it before it gets to that catch basin. So this pond will have, no doubt, at the end of the day, we'll have a sediment bore bay and other things incorporated in it. Meet the requirement, so when it's sounding cleaning it.
There's a comment from the road agent about meeting the maximum grade in the town regulations for projects. So you would need to show a profile of that driveway so that, and you know, address that issue in the regulations.
Yep, it'll be a full plan set with profiles and standard profile sheet, grading and everything.
Underground utilities?
Yes.
Okay. Are there going to be any lights along that driveway?
There's none proposed, the lighting proposed.
Okay.
There was one comment about the driveway width.
60 to 2 foot shoulders that exceed your driveway regulations by a lot, it actually meets that class six and private road thing slightly now. That might be, when you're working on that shared driveway, Jeff, that might be a good regulation to look at. Do that 16 with the two foot shoulders like they're proposing.
And that is what road agents suggested.
Okay. It's over above what's required by our regulations.
Just the last comment about 20 feet.
It's not our filing.
Okay.
No, and this is a residential driveway, so it's a, there's a maximum of 18, right?
Yeah, well, it has a maximum of 18 at the curb and a minimum of 10 by our regulations. So this 16 with the two foot shoulders is pretty close to the max that you could do. And with the little swale at the end, it might slightly exceed that 18 that our regulations allow. But if you're going to do a 16 one driveway shared driveway up there, it would make more sense to wave that radius at the road than to now on the driveway up.
Yeah, I agree with that, I also, I like to see vehicle turnaround feature of this plan.
What was the special exception on the design of the driveway?
The max, the maximum width is 18 feet by our regulations for residential driveway. So if you've got a 16 with two foot shoulders coming down, when you hit the radius at the road, you're probably going to exceed that 18 feet. But if you're going to try to keep it as that 16 going up, it makes sense to wave that back to 18, that's where it's a shared drive, not just a regular common single drive.
I hadn't seen John, however, that I had always interpreted that to be the, basically the mean width of the driveway, not necessarily as it clears out at the end.
Yeah, the reason for it was they didn't want to have two cars stacked up, trying to get out at the same time, cause traffic issues, that was the whole reason for the maximum.
And the maximum grade is what?
I believe it's 8%.
I think it's 10% in our regulations.
10% driveways. We will meet the regulations, whatever, but once we get up onto the hill, it flattens up. Yeah, we'll have a hill bottom out. I think there was a question on what was a special exception, the special exception was to allow a driveway to access a lot, not its frontage.
Oh, the one that the zoning board.
Yeah.
Got a couple of comments when you guys are done.
Say that again?
I have a couple of comments when you guys.
Good, I was going to open it up to the public, yours first, John?
Yeah, normally on the plan, they have the thing where you got your total lot area, show that you either have the 35,000 square feet of contiguous uplands or say how many contiguous uplands you have.
Okay.
And then there's 60,000 that's free of Spous ledge, high grade soils and stuff. On these lots, you've probably got more than 60,000 contiguous uplands cleaned up, so it would show that you meet both of those. But if it could be shown on each lot, you know, next to where you have the.
Just with the lot area.
And then the other thing, the way the zoning regulations are written, rightways, which those driveway goes through the first two lots are technically a rightaway. And I know it's a private rightaway, but the townsman defined the difference between a private rightaway and a public rightaway. For purposes, it just said 50 feet, 40 feet back from the edge of the rightaway. So it really should be 40 foot setback should follow us that driveway coming around those first two lots. It looks like the houses are back enough, so it's not going to be any issue.
So they have to be 40 feet back from that proposed rightaway.
If you read the definition of regulations, it talks about rightaways.
Yeah.
As being the front setback is to the rightaway. I ran into this issue, not because of shared driveways in the past, but there's a whole bunch of lots going down to the lakes. And those are all in private property, they're private rightaways, they're not anything, but they always maintain setbacks from them because you have never defined that or different. With this come up, when I saw this, it still fits into that range, but it might be one of the ones to look at for possible changes. To say a shared driveway rightaway is exempt or something like that from the setback purposes. But the way other regulations are written now, and it's in zoning, that's where the problem lies, so it probably, I think you can make those houses work easy enough.
Yeah, I think we got that anyway, so.
Yeah, so but, so you draw that 40 foot front line going around, in the meantime, it might be something we might want to look at, possibly changing for shared driveway purposes. But I'm just trying to be consistent with what zoning says and I get criticized quite a bit for saying I'm not doing the most stringent even though I try to.
Always someone that'll criticize.
I try to follow the whole stringent, if you have multiple things, I mean, one is a prime example, that's all, someone's private property, everybody has to meet the setbacks on it.
I speak your road, it'll need a road name, and so having that off the list by the select team.
Is there, there's a list available of?
There is, yeah. I don't want to talk to website, but it's still not going through the process, that's just.
Buddy Way so.
Select board beside the road.
Okay.
So you can propose a name that's not on the list, but there's a. So it's good to have that resolved before you plan to finalize, so we can go on the plan.
Any thoughts from the board? Open public comment at this time, if they made comments, please come up to the computer. Joining us remotely, star six to unmute yourself, you can raise your hand, the little icon to raise your hand. And unmute yourself.
If somebody with area code 314 just unmuted themselves.
Yes, sir, can you hear me?
Yes.
Say your name and address.
Okay, my name is Clay Dairy Berry and I live at 35 Boulder Drive here in Barrington.
Thank you.
I just had a quick question. I'm sorry, say that again?
Go ahead.
Yeah, just a quick question, so having lived here, you know, for a few years, we've observed, and I know some of our neighbors have as well, that there is a link that lives. um, in, in looking at the plan, exactly where, where this construction would go. And in reviewing the documents, I don't see any sort of wildlife mitigation plan or, uh, or an environmental impact study or anything like that, um, that would address, uh, the lynx and the loss of wildlife habitat. Um, especially with it being a, you know, an endangered species in the state of New Hampshire and federally threatened. And I was wondering if there was anything that you guys were planning to do to address that.
Hey. What are the requirements, John?
I'm looking at that. Okay, so in the ZELP page twenty-eight, seven point six, environmental impact. Says in projects involving twenty or more lots, determination of the planning board a significant impact to critical areas of natural resources.
Say twenty more lots?
Twenty or more lots, it says. Or if the board finds a significant impact to a critical area or a natural resource. You know, that is. If you find that, then there's a whole list of stuff that's supposed to be part of that environmental impact adjustment. It has to do, I mean, there is a thing on wildlife in there, but most of it has to do with wetlands, soils, topography, vegetation, surface water, groundwater.
Well, there is a fish and wildlife, but it does apply to twenty lots and over more.
That's what it says in the regulations.
Yeah.
So you'd need to make that case if you have that concern, um, about the specifics of, of what the impacts you're worried about to that wildlife would be. Documenting as best you can, what, what you know the situation to be now and what you think the impact would be.
Okay, I mean, yeah, because the, the gist is this, and I mean, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent up to speed on the, uh, the process, but, um, you know, if you look at it topographically, you have a bit of a U shape because you have the Isinglass River, uh, which, when the water is high, is a natural barrier to, uh, to any sort of migration corridor or travel corridor for wildlife. Especially a predator species like a lynx, um, that hunts. And then you have Nippon Lake Golf Course, which is, you know, not exactly ideal wildlife habitat in Nippon Lake, I think that road right there. Um, so you're already in kind of a, a U-shaped bowl. And between the condo project where they're, they're cutting the trees right there now, and this, um, it, it effectively disrupts that corridor, that travel or migration corridor that any sort of predator species like a lynx, um, requires to hunt and live. And in addition, you know, being winter time, they're dinned up right now. And obviously, if you kick an animal out of its den, especially in, in, in winter time, um, it's probably gonna die. And, but, you know, philosophically, I'm not opposed to, to the construction, and I'm not trying to say that, I'm just saying that there should be some sort of mitigation or at least a plan to analyze what does live there versus what may travel through, and then what may or may not need to be relocated or assessed in terms of how, you know, the construction overall is going to impact, um, the habitat and, and the life of those, uh, animals.
Yep, thank you, Clay. Um, I don't, I mean, I don't know where our purview lies in that, I mean, other than the zoning and the twenty lots, I don't know.
Well, it says, you know, oh, we're in the termination of the planning board. If you define, if you decide, this board decides that you feel that this is really a critical issue, then you could ask for it. Um, with that said, between Overlook and Boulder Drive, there's probably seventy acres of open space. And then you've got a whole bunch of open space going, Lake Road just past that entrance. So there's, um, a huge wildlife area that's wrapped all around this that could never be developed as it stands right now.
Yeah, and, and my feeling for, I mean, these lots are good size and spread out, they leave a, a fair amount of.
And the way those wetlands are constrained and the wetland buffers that go for those, a whole back portion of that whole lot would never be developed once them houses are in the.
And I could speak to that real quick if you want. Um, there is a lot of boulders out here, and the intent is this place, this is one being cut right now, and I don't know if he was referring to some other funnel. I don't know of any other project in this area that's being cut right now. He may be thinking that this is a funnel project, but this is actually this project where the trees were cut. And what he's cut is what he's cutting. So from this pocket of wetlands right here, this kind of, kind of at an angle through here and then along here where that wetland is, that's all gonna be remain as is. There's, there's a lot of great habitat back here that's not gonna be disturbed. Not been over here by these houses over here, there's houses along here. I believe the gentleman speaking lives right in this area or the houses.
So you're saying the area to be disturbed has already been disturbed?
Correct. And this is open space right here for Boulder, uh, Boulder Drive.
Because it would, if they have a fifty foot strip all the way around on that. But they're being open spaces.
So the area that's not gonna be disturbed will buck right up against that, and it'll be part of these lots, but it'll be undisturbed. Not for habitat. Any other question?
Thank you, I appreciate, I appreciate.
Thank you. Um, any other question?
Phil's participating virtually, if you'd like to make a comment. Again, it's star six to unmute all, you can raise your hand on the top chair, if you're recognized by the chair.
All right, hearing that, we'll close public comment. Um, any more comments from the board?
Hey, I don't like this design, highway design, but I think it's appropriate to escape, so. My favorite, but going, you're on, you're going on a state highway and with the particular situation on the site, I think it's the right plan.
Yeah, sure. You gotta come right up to the, please, get your camera.
Spoke last time at the land conservation zoning for this driveway, and I, I think it's the right thing for this, uh, for this piece of land. But we did talk about this, you know, the, the storm, uh, settlement pond. You know, we talked about impervious surface. The eye, as you know, it's a, a pantry protected waterway, so you have to have the buffer, and you definitely don't want all those, that whole impervious roadway or driveways just going straight into a culvert into the river, so. All I'd ask is when they put this retention pond, it's a, it's a nice vegetated pond that's gonna take care of the sediment before it goes.
This would require that, but, uh, D O D S, because it's so close to the Isinglass, they're probably gonna scrutinize it way better than anybody else is gonna, because, like you said, it's a protected waterway, it has that same criteria as like being next to a lake.
Right.
That's, it adds all that stuff going.
But I liked it, what I, what he said, though, that is a, you know, there's a lot of wetlands back there, and it's good to care. It's right behind my house, and I've seen the clearing, and I'm glad to hear that it's done for now. I guess the land, uh, the homeowners can probably do what they want once they buy the property, but right now, you know, I think it's the best thing, all three houses on that plot is kind of the best thing you could ask for, except for it not being developed. So, anyway, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thanks.
One other thing to add to that is Lamprey River Advisory Committee will also review it. Cause they're within fifteen hundred feet of the Isinglass, they review any shoreline permit.
Honestly, Isinglass.
Yeah, Isinglass, did I say something?
You said Lamprey.
So there'll be a couple eyes on it. Um, as well as our engineering firm, I'll look at the drainage unless we pass on that because D E S will, but to our highest standard. Um, if there's no more comments from the board, um.
Did, did he get all the information? Do you have all the information you need?
I do, I do.
All right, can I make a motion to close the design review?
Got you. Wishes to close the design review at this?
Yeah.
Motion by Jeff Fran, seconded by Ron Allard, Donna Masucci. Andy M.
Andy M I.
Buddy Hackett.
Hackett I.
Ron Allard.
Allard I.
Steve Diamond.
Diamond I.
Jeff Fran.
Fran I.
James Chenison I, all in favor, the resolution is closed. Forward to seeing you in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. Report some other committees unfinished business.
Private roads still?
Yeah.
I was just.
And we got three private roads. Uh, number five.
Mr. Chair, this might be production, if you want, I can give a quick update on the select board review of the class six private road policy. As it, how it may or may not impact these applicants.
Okay.
Okay. So the select board was thrilled with this evaluation of an option with ten percent, uh, investment in public construction cost investment as an option of an alternative upgrading the full section of road by sixteen two and two.
It was great.
I mean, better word for it. So, uh, what I've done is I have, um, created a draft, uh, policy update that the select board will, at their February. And, uh, they seem, conceptually, they seem amenable to the proposal, some of the other minor changes. But they wanted to see it, and better at that point, it's possible that they'll amend the policy at that meeting on the. So we asked them what to do with some of the private class six applications that are pending, knowing at that point that we would have a meeting. Tonight, it may be interesting public hearing on, um, the fourteen. So what they asked us to do is talk to the applicants, ask them if they currently intend to meet the policy as it's written, which is sixteen, two and two, and for travel. And if they do, then the select board will schedule the public hearing, um, for the merits and likely authorize the issues on the market because they're willing to. And if not, schedule those public hearings for those applications who are newer, even the twenty-eight, ending the result of the policy so that they can, those applicants can be asked at that point. Are you willing to meet the policy as it's written now, either the sixteen year, or make a ten percent investment? So John had done that, talked to all, all three of these applications, represented their, uh, and they've all asked to wait until the twenty-eight. And understandably so, if, if there's an option that might be on the table, I'd wanna consider it also. And so as it relates to the planning board review, maybe the planning board, uh, you only have a day's notice if the select board policy on the fourteen takes the fifteen. But it's possible that the planning board might wanna wait to do their review, ending the select board authorizing the policy, and then your review could be, as long as they meet the policy we support it, or if you have reason not to support it otherwise. So just a thought, or you could make that decision tonight, assuming that there won't be any.
Are you suggesting on all, we've got three building permits lined up here, are you suggesting holding off on making a decision on these until the fifty?
Uh, you could, because none of them will have hearings scheduled until at least the twenty-eight, because they'd like to wait until the select board resolves, um, the, any policy changes which are currently pending.
Um, all right, I think I'm okay with that, except one of these I have a problem with.
So maybe you discuss it anyways, to get it on record now and give them more time to consider.
Well, irrespective of the road situation, one of them is, if I'm not mistaken, the lot's like two, one, one acres. And I don't say whether they're standing on the footprint or not.
Which one's this?
Still have to meet setbacks. No matter how small the lot is, right?
Lucky point?
Uh, one of them is they're gonna take the existing house.
Take the existing house down and put up a two-story. I think it was twenty four by thirty-four.
Yeah, no, my mistake, that's my mistake, and that lot was point one, one acres. And it doesn't say if it's the same footprint. And, you know, the requirements here are the same footprint.
Well, they're exceeding the volume, that's why they gotta go through the air process.
But are they, are they building on the same footprint or not?
Um, I'd have to look back and look at the application. Can't remember if they're the same footprint or if they're expansion on their setbacks because they haven't asked to go to the zoning board.
Okay, they, it doesn't say whether it's the same footprint or not.
What John's saying is it doesn't have to be the same footprint if you need to set that.
I'm saying if it's on the same footprint, then I have less of a problem with the setbacks.
You don't have a, I think, you understand, if it needs setbacks, it's a setback.
Well, they don't meet the setback.
They don't?
Well, if they stay in the same footprint, they don't have to. If they expand out of the footprint, any expansion out of the footprint, it's a footprint, they don't have to.
But even then, they're extending the volume.
Yeah, they're gonna put a two-story house.
Yeah. I had the same question, looking at the setbacks on that, that's the second one, that's number six, as to whether they were staying within the same footprint or not.
I guess that one, part of it to me on that one, whether they, regardless of the road, I have a problem with that, the ones. Um, you know, with a one, a point one, one go, two-story, pop that small, not meeting the setbacks, I mean, I know this is, I'm not probably saying what Steve wanted to say, but, you know.
Nonconforming, they board.
Nonconforming, but, uh.
It's none, I think, I feel personally, that you're going to a dangerous road that we're gonna start doing, um, occupation standards. You're saying one-story, two-story, three-story, a garage, this, that. You can put twenty people in a one-bedroom house, it doesn't make it right. You put one old couple, and one of them passes away, and they live there alone in a six-bedroom, it's one person.
No, I don't think it is, but.
So I feel very uncomfortable with the volume increase in the, the characterization that it's gonna, what it creates. Because unless we're gonna start having occupation standards, I think it's dangerous to go down that road. You, there's nobody, I think, that lives on the water, or any lot really, that would like to be told that they can't have a second story above and go up and increase volume. If you live in a closet, you bought the closet on the water, and you wanna put one bedroom upstairs, I, I, it's, it's mischaracterizing as, as an increase in volume if there's no volume to be had in the first place, you know, and, and it's, it's a speaking, it's, you know, the same thing where they put the foundation.
Jamie, on the, on the classified roads and private roads, number four, what sort of place it was being building, where the use, the volume, the footprint remained the same. So it's already, it's already in the, you know, it's already there, it says the volume cannot be.
No, no, that's not what it says.
Right.
If the volume doesn't increase, they wouldn't have to go through the process, they just signed the identification, I give them a building permit.
Yeah.
If the volume increased, they're going through the process you have in here now.
Right.
And the process here now under six seventy-four forty-one has to do with access, it does nothing to do with the development of the lot. Development of the lot is already controlled by zoning and, um, the building codes and all the other stuff. So that existing footprint, if they stay within that existing footprint, or if they go outside and meet the setbacks, then they don't need to go to the zoning board, if they don't meet it, they gotta go to the zoning board. That's a zoning board discussion, not a planning board discussion.
We're getting a recommendation here.
Well, the recommendation's supposed to be based on the road, it's all about the road and the access. Under six seventy-four forty-one, it's about the access to the lot, this whole discussion is about access to the lot, not the development of the lot.
But making a nonconforming.
That, that's not gonna be more nonconforming.
That's, that's what I have, that's what I have a problem.
No, it's not, I actually had someone go to the zoning board because they were expanding going up. The zoning board, they had the same footprint, they expanded going up, and I told them they had to go to the zoning board because it was an expansion of a nonconforming use. The zoning board said, we don't consider up an expansion. And I marked it in my zoning book, and I marked the date because until that zoning article gets changed, up is not an expansion by how the laws become.
John, I've kept on saying footprint, footprint. If they extend the footprint, then I have a big problem, because they don't say where they're expanding. That's my point.
I think you were just telling me a story about someone expanding their footprint, and you went to, you, you, you went to the proper board to get an exception from it. It's, it's, I mean, to categorically say no, we shouldn't.
No, I'm not saying that, I'm saying they don't say where they're staying the same footprint.
But that's. I agree, but I.
So he's actually making the house smaller, the footprint's gonna be smaller.
Well, I don't, that's not necessarily.
Cause he assesses one, they got it twenty-four by thirty-five, and he's doing twenty-four by thirty-four.
But the problem with the footprint is this footprint isn't square, right? So you can see here that there's multiple contusions in the footprint, so the overall footprint, if you were gonna bound the house in a box, would be twenty-four by thirty-four. But like this area and this area isn't. But like this area and this area isn't built. So if he actually makes it a solid twenty four by thirty four, then it's expanded because it's outside. And if you were gonna tear down a house and build a new one, would you build it with this, that? No. So it's, it's likely going to be different. But to John's point, and John makes a good point, the select board stray office law, the if this, if this lot were on a class five road, town maintained road, where some of those were not edge water over by those.
There's a lot of small lots.
But those are class five.
On class five lots.
And so they're small lots, if this, if if what they are proposing to do right now was on that lot, there would be no review process if they met the regulations for setbacks. And. There wouldn't be any review process. And so the the point of this part of the review process for the plastics and private road policy is strictly about access. So all of the other regulations, normances exist, and they're going to have to meet them, and if they don't, they're gonna have to go through the proper channel. But this review process is about access and access only. And what access, because you have the opportunity to, what access improvements can be asked for or require as relate, as it relates to this project? Because again, if it was on a class five road, you wouldn't review it unless they needed, they wouldn't come to you anyways if they needed. Uh, but does that differentiation make sense? I know we're asking you to review it, and you're thinking setbacks and everything, and and that can factor into your recommendation.
That's accurate, if you're talking about putting a a house on a, you know, a thirty thousand square foot lot. See, it's one thing on a private road versus a five thousand square foot, this is a five thousand square foot lot. You're talking about putting a house on that, does it, does it make sense to provide access to that?
But it's so, it's not for access. It's such an arbitrary number, because the next person is saying, if you're gonna try and put that house on a three acre lot, it's crazy, that's gotta be on a five acre lot.
This is a five thousand.
But it's arbitrary, and it's someone's personal. It really is.
Well, in a five thousand square foot lot.
But it's like raising up your house to put the foundation under.
If they needed.
Yeah, no, but it's, 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 I don't think.
I think he came in and gave me a much easier prospect, one because I had mentioned about the possible changes. This is the one.
Five thousand square foot lot, the house is sixteen nine square feet, it's only, it's less than one third, it's still within that forty percent of the law.
Driveway, they've, they've got decks too. Level that.
It's impervious, it's, it's driveways, it's, it's all kinds, it's everything. So it's not just a house.
And Ron, just to further set your mind at ease, they will, they're going to be required to have a survey plan of this lot because it's less than an acre. And that isn't, they haven't submitted that yet because then the part of this process is just access. And if they expand the footprint, they're absolutely going to be.
If they, if they expand the footprint, so it doesn't conform.
Right.
If they, if they have footprint expansion. Oh, I did.
I don't, I don't think you can.
Well, it actually goes on the other lot, it looks like.
Well, yeah. Broad brush, but I don't think that they can make this building to comply with.
Right, so.
They're gonna need it there, zoning board's gonna have to look at it. And hey, attend that meeting and speak of public comment, huh?
Well, and part, and part of what it, and part of what it is, for the discussion on this, if the selectmen are gonna require a lot of work on the road, before someone spends money going to the zoning board and doing complete designs and everything else, it makes sense to find out what that requirement's gonna be, because if it's one of them things where they can do ten percent, so they have to put, let's say, I think he showed us a thing like, was it two hundred and eighty thousand or something? So so they have to put twenty eight thousand into the roads, one thing, but if it was one of them ones where they're gonna hold it to where he had to build this road sixteen foot wide with two foot shoulders, the right of way there isn't that wide. So why would he go spend all the money to do all the other stuff if he ends up not being able to do anything because he can't make that roadway? So that was part of the discussion that we've been having for the last probably, what, month or so? And that's one of the things I explained to the builder on this, and that's why he brought it all in without having all that stuff, because his customer wants to know what they're getting into.
Well, you're telling me to trust the zoning board, I'm having trouble doing that, but I hear you, I hear you.
What's, what's the goal of regulating and controlling these people's property?
I think putting a house on a five thousand square foot is no way gonna be an end of setback.
But the house is already there.
You're the, you're the three acre guy, for Christ's sake, and now you're telling me five thousand square feet is enough?
But the house is already there, somebody owns the property.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay if you build, if you build on exactly the same footprint, I have no problem.
But it's a bed and breakfast casino.
Ron, there's a bill before the legislature right now, statewide zoning to limit the high end of a zoning requirement for minimum lot size for single building to ten thousand square feet. So if that makes it through the legislature, town law or statewide zoning, we don't have control, not opt in, not opt out, and every lot can be ten thousand square feet. So maybe don't go to the zoning board, you need to go to the state here.
They're gonna force density down.
It's getting worse and worse.
The problem is, you still gotta meet septic load.
Right.
Yeah, so because of the soils in Barrington, and you got your well and septic separation, I think you would have a hard time, you would have a hard time with.
And that's not unique to Barry. So to the point of this review, Mr. Allard, if if the with your perspective, those are comments that could certainly be passed on to the select board, and and the zoning team, that matter, put it on the record. And so back to the original point, do you want to have a full review of of all three applications, or do you want to try to do that on the meeting of the fifteenth, knowing what the policy is, if the select board adopts it, and presumably by that time, you know, we'll know if the applicants have the option of ten percent and are willing to comply with that? So essentially, you'll have more information than you have now because of policy.
Cause they'd meet the night before.
I think the select board.
I think the delay makes sense.
And all of these applicants.
Jeff, you as well.
Well, the only one, you know, certainly on the first two, I I could see us waiting on those two, the number seven, the last one, though. All that is, is they're jacking the building up and putting a a concrete foundation underneath.
Increase the volume.
Yeah.
Connor's point was there, the select board's not gonna make a decision till the week after anyways.
At the applicant's request.
At the applicant's request, so we got time to push them all down.
Yeah, and this one, I think, had a fourteen foot paved road going down, if I remember right, is this the one Eagle Drive was?
Eagle Drive, yep, yep.
And didn't have much for shoulders, and they're looking at it like, which, I think it was two years ago, they said the pavement was done, so it's relatively new. We don't want to destroy our road to make it meet the town standards, that's what the people's comments to me was. That's something they can lay out to the selectmen during part of the.
So they could, they could take, you know, get the select board to prove that, they could take sixty four hundred dollars and talk to the road association at their on request, and say, hey, how could this sixty four hundred dollars be spent best, you know, do we keep up the drainage trails? Do we send one for the overlay or whatever?
Put a shoulder in it, it doesn't have one.
Yeah, right, yeah. Which improved driveway Italians.
Yeah, ridge over the lake.
So I'll make a motion to move five, six and seven to the meeting on the fifteenth. Uh, motion by James Genesis, seconded by Ron Allard, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Who opposed?
No, you said aye.
It was an aye. Microphone clicking aye.
All right. I think that's it, one last point of business, I'm stepping down from the planning board, I start Monday working under John as the assistant building inspector, so because of that, Jeff will step up as acting chair.
Right, I'm gonna be there at the next meeting.
You won't be there?
I said I will be there.
Oh, okay, and I think we should nominate and vote on a vice chair, would that be appropriate?
My suggestion would be. Well, I, my suggestion would be wait till March, because we're required to have election of the chair or vice chair in March anyway.
I think that's good, I think that's really good thinking.
Yeah, I I I don't think there's any point in doing that for the next meeting.
Well, I say thank you all, I enjoyed serving with you, it's been a wonderful several years. I'm I'm sad to leave this part, but excited to start a new, a new chapter, so.
Well, this gives us the opportunity to grant new code enforcement officer.
Um, so.
So, uh, come on, we need to patch or something.
Both. I didn't make the seven year.
No, it's had or something, you know. No, we're not going retroactive, we're not doing a look back once we start the patches.
I'm gonna come looking for one as an honorary patch holder.
He'll, he'll get on the town's longevity recognition.
So the next meeting is the fifteenth, correct? So a motion to adjourn until the fifteenth.
I make a motion to adjourn until the fifteenth.
Motion by Ron Allard, seconded by Jeff Fran. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Good luck.
Thank you so much.